Good evening and welcome to the April twenty-one, twenty-two-five study session. So excited to see so many students and we are glad to be honoring you for your contributions to our community this evening. So let me call this meeting to order and clerk, please take the role.
Mayor Hartke.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ellis.
Here.
Councilmember Encinas.
Here.
Councilmember Poston.
Here.
Councilmember Orlando.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Very good. First on our agenda is scheduled public appearances and Councilmember Encinas is going to join me for that. Councilmember Encinas, you're in luck. We only have one proclamation tonight. If I could have Ryan come up with members of our housing team? All right. Whereas April twenty-two-five marks the fifty-seventh anniversary of the Fair Housing Act, which affirms national policy of fair housing for all, and whereas the Fair Housing Act prohibits discrimination in the sale, rental, and financing of housing based on race, color, religion, sex, national origin, familial status, or disability, and whereas the City of Chandler's nondiscrimination ordinance promotes a community in which all members have the right to be treated fairly and live their lives with dignity, free from discrimination or disparate treatment, and whereas access to safe, affordable housing is a critical foundation for overall well-being, impacting physical and mental health, quality of life, access to education, and economic opportunities, and whereas the City of Chandler is committed to fair housing for all, actively promoting awareness of fair housing principles, practices, rights, and responsibilities, and whereas the City of Chandler recognizes and values the efforts of those who seek to reduce barriers to full and fair housing opportunities, and whereas April is officially recognized as National Fair Housing Month. Now therefore, Kevin Hartke, Mayor of the City of Chandler, to hereby proclaim the month of April twenty-two-five as Fair Housing Month. Woo! Suddenly I've choked up. Ryan, take it over. So we're going to recognize young artists here today.
Sorry, Mayor, I'm just, I don't see it up there. Oh, there it is. Okay. Thanks so much, Mayor, Council. So this is our, so we had a fair housing poster contest. This is the second year that we've had this contest. It's, of course, in celebration of Fair Housing Month, and this year we were very fortunate to partner with CUSD Schools to bring to kids some information about fair housing. And so we really focused on the concept of what does home mean, and what does home mean to you? And then we were able to really introduce the concept of fair housing and invite students to do some art around fair housing. And this year's theme was Making a House My Home. So I'm really happy to say we had many wonderful works of art submitted to us, and today before you, you have our contest winners, and they are with us today. And so our first contest winner is Ariana B. She is nine years old. She's in third grade at Sanborn Elementary. And Ariana, I would invite you to come on up. There we go. Congratulations. You got this. You got this. All right. Thank you. And with no further ado, I'm going to invite our second winner up, Maida K. Maida is ten years old. She's in fourth grade at Conley Elementary. Come on up, Maida. All right. So those are our winners, as we like to say in our office, our best in show, and we congratulate them. We have a fantastic gift for them, but they're so big that we're going to give them to them on the way out because they're big and we didn't want them to have to manage them. Yep?
Police Department does it all.
There was enough details there to, like you were doing a crime scene or something. Next, if I could invite Micah Miranda and our liaison to the Science and Technology Fair, Councilmember Orlando, to come on up. Every February, Chandler celebrates the exploration of innovation. The Chandler Innovation Fair showcases businesses, artists, students, innovators in the community as Chandler participates in the statewide Arizona SciTech Festival. And once again, we held the annual Chandler Innovation Fair competition. This is easily one of my favorite events of the entire year. And winning teams were chosen for presenting the most educational, most creative, and most passionate products, and we are excited to have them here tonight. Micah, take over.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Mayor, City Council, really excited to be here tonight. It's one of my favorite nights of the year as well as along with the Science Fair, but tonight we get to recognize some really outstanding kids. But before we do that, I would like to recognize Ms. Odette Moore and Stephanie. Along with Shannon Prince and Renee Sweden from CUSD. Oh, here it goes. Where'd she go? They put in a ton of hours to make this event happen, and this past year was our largest event ever. We had over ten thousand guests show up for the science spectacular. It was overflowing. Thank you to everybody who came out. As the mayor mentioned, this is our premier event to showcase the talent of our future. Chandler has prided ourselves on generating talent well into the future, and we couldn't do it without our sponsors. So at this time, I'd also like to recognize our sponsors for Microchip. If you could please stand up and I call your company name. Microchip, thank you. Google Fiber. We have Pride Group. Waste Management of Arizona. I know they're here. And we have a whole bunch of other sponsors who weren't able to make it tonight, which include Northrop Grumman, Intel, Avnet, SRP, Cirrus Logic, Phoenix Sky Harbor Airport, NXP Semiconductors, and Game Truck. So thank you to our sponsors. Without your support, we couldn't make this happen. So. Additionally, we'd like to recognize Councilmember Orlando for serving as our council liaison for this event. So thank you for your support as well. All right. Now we're going to recognize the students. So our first winner is Castile Science Club. If you could please begin making your way up while I read out your description. The Castile Science Booth's interactive sensory bottle experiment blended science and art. Students combine mica, water, food coloring, to create a mesmerizing swirling pattern demonstrating key scientific principles such as density, viscosity, centrifugal force, and as participants shook and spun their bottles, they observed fluid dynamics and momentum and the suspension settling of particles in real time. The shimmering mica showcased light reflection and refraction while dissolving food coloring and illustrated solubility. All right. Right. Congratulations. Congratulations, Castile. All right. Next, we have the Basha High Science is Fun. Do we have them here tonight with us? All right. Please come on up. Their teacher is Laura Pellegrini, AP Chemistry Honors Chemistry and Science is Fun. Basha High Science is Fun is a STEM-focused community outreach program. At their science booth, their high school students served as role models, made science learning fun by exploring exciting science demonstrations with the public. From flashlights to dry ice to polarized paper, the high school leader showcased young, showed younger children and their families that anyone can be a scientist. Through engaging scientific toys and games, Basha High Science is Fun presenters help young children develop a positive self-identity and connect young students' lives to their science around them. So congratulations. Congratulations. Next up, we have Santan Junior High. Teacher Kara Odom. All right. Next up, we have Bologna Elementary. Yes, once you jump up, take it forward. Thank you very much. All right. Next up, we have Bologna Elementary, led by teacher Sandra Nickerson, sixth grade. At Bologna Elementary, grades second through six students are excellently, excitedly diving into STEM through the Legos Robotics Club. This year, they tackled the first Legos League Submerge Challenge, building mission-specific structures and engineering robots to complete complex underwater-themed tasks. But their learning didn't stop at robots. Students also took on real-world ocean issues, researching and designing innovative solutions as part of their innovations project. Congratulations, Bologna Elementary. Congratulations, Bologna. All right. Next up is Hamilton High School National Art Society. At this time, I'd invite Eugen to come forward, and she has a few words to say.
Hello, everyone. My name is Eugen, and I'm a co-president of the National Art Honor Society from Hamilton High School. So for this year's Science Innovation Fair, we have decided to bring carp kites to the table. So what, where did carp kites originate from? Well, carp kites originated from Edo period Japan in order, and they were created in order to respect and honor the warriors' sacrifice their lives. But this really brings us to the question, what do these even symbolize? What are carps for? Well, tracing back to folktales, carps would swim up the river, going through obstacles, crashes, and waves. After overcoming these obstacles, they would travel back down into the water to meet the Jade Emperor. The Jade Emperor would then give the carp, the carps the ability to become a dragon. Essentially, becoming a dragon is a symbol, is a symbol, is a symbolism of their perseverance, tenacity, and determination. And that is, and that is what we, Art, National Art Honor Society from Hamilton Art Club, hope to bring to the Innovation Fair. Thank you. We also hope to share these carp kites with our fellow council members as well. Thank you.
Congratulations, Hamilton. And our last award winner is Weinberg Gifted Academy. Come on up. Led by teacher Dana Hanson, sixth-grade science teacher. The third graders did a project-based learning for Chandler Innovations Fair. The booth was a student-centered, hands-on demonstration of the projects and activities and experiments conducted across grade levels from worms to robotics. The projects and activities were impressive but not as amazing as the students' knowledge and excitement. Congratulations. Congratulations, Weinberg. And lastly, our sponsors that are in the audience, I would like to invite you forward for a photo opportunity as well. Please come on up, sponsor. Who's coming up? Sponsors. Thank you very much, Mayor, Council. That concludes our presentation.
All right. That concludes our presentations. All right. We'll wait a few seconds. All right, Council. We had just a few items called in for consent tonight. Item number four and item, item number eight, both called in by Vice Mayor Ellis. So item number four, Ryan Peters. Our Strategic Initiatives Director.
Thank you, Ryan.
You're welcome. All right. I'm just going to do this without a presentation, if that's okay. I don't know how to load it. Mayor, Council, item four is a new agreement with River North Transit, aka VIA, to have them continue operating Chandler Flex. The city was awarded a million dollars in congressionally-directed spending from Congressman Stanton. The grant was awarded in 2024, but to be able to use the money, we had to re-procur the service to make sure that it fit with all of the Federal Transportation Administration guidelines. And so we went through that process, and then the contract rewarding with River North is in compliance with that, with those guidelines. Chandler Flex is an on-demand service. Passengers can request rides on Chandler Flex app by calling or on an app. Rides are provided on Chandler Flex minivans will often be shared with other passengers. Passengers may have a short walk to designated pickup and drop-off areas. The passenger fare of two dollars or one dollars for, one dollar for elderly and people with disabilities is in place, and students continue to ride for free to and from after-school activities, but do pay a regular fare on other trips. This summer, we are excited to bring back our free summer trips to city facilities. This program encourages ridership when schools are out and encourages the use of city facilities. Since Chandler Flex began operating in 2022, the service has provided over one hundred thousand rides to five thousand different individuals, and about a third of the trips are school trips. Other popular destinations include Chandler Regional Medical Center, Tumbleweed Park, Employment Centers on Price Road, shopping centers, and transit facilities to transfer to the regional bus network. If you look at the map, you'll notice the Chandler Flex service area serves a largely underserved part of, of the city as it relates to fixed route transit, and so we're really trying to provide that gap to get folks circulating within the city and then also connect to the regional network. And we've received a lot of positive feedback on the service. In fact, we have a four-point-nine out of five-star rating. With that, available to answer any questions.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Ryan, really, I wanted you to come to give us this good news today because when we first started thinking about this, we didn't think that it was going to work for that South Side, but it just blew up and everybody really enjoyed it. Of course, the studies showed us that there was a need in that area, and there we are, meeting that need. One of the things that I know our community is well able to do is utilize whatever we give them to use when it comes to transportation. We don't have rails here in Chandler, so we try to do a lot of things that really move people around in so many different ways, from our first mile to last mile, and then now we're introducing the Flex for the last year. Can you continue telling me the one question that I hear all the time from people? When are we going to expand this? And how far can we take it? I know the students are loving it. They get to. are loving it. They get to go to school early and get picked up and straight to the corner from their house. My own niece is using it right now. So tell me, when is it that we're going to increase this capacity right now?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, if you look at the slide, actually, it disappeared. There was a yellow area that actually indicated some expanded service area to the north of the boundary and then to the southeast of the boundary. And that's something we're unable to do, or we were able to do due to additional funding from our congressional partners, as well as figuring out a way to manage our regional transit funds and then leverage our own city general funds to help support the program. And so we've had a measured approach over the years. We didn't wanna launch a service, get too big where we couldn't manage it and it got too expensive. And so we've been slowly looking incrementally at ways to grow the boundary while still staying within a budget. So to answer your question, as far as future growth opportunities, we're constantly evaluating that, but we don't currently have any hard dates on anything we're gonna launch in the imminent future.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I would like to also thank my colleague, Mayor and Council, for really putting effort, lots of effort behind this and making sure that we continue to have that. Thank you, Ryan.
Any additional questions for Ryan? All right.
Thank you.
And our second-to-last item called in, purchase of library locker systems. John Septon's gonna give us a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. What an honor it is to be able to talk about this item, and thank you for the opportunity to share. From a tactical standpoint, this is a request to purchase a library locker system from Lungso Systems, just north of $44,000. I almost said 44 million. However, it's those extra points that were in there. But really, the root of this is that our library leadership team and the friends of the Chandler Public Library have come together, colluded, no, inspired.
Yes.
Collaborated on a way, yeah, one more way to recognize and benefit the community through access to information and the shared resource of our book collection, and that is the creation of the book lockers. So if you think about sort of the Amazon lockers, well, that same technology exists for our library books and resources. It will be an opportunity for us to place this right in front of the new expanded Tumbleweed Recreation Center. And we see this as a way to, again, capture the audience that is a user of the Tumbleweed Rec Center, but at the same time, make a service available well beyond the hours and well beyond the location of the boxes of the libraries. So they've done a great job. I do wanna highlight the fact that the Friends continue to do exceptional work. It's an opportunity for our community to volunteer one's time and absolutely contribute your philanthropy, all for a great cause and for a direct, direct benefit to the community. I do have the entire team here from the library if I cannot answer any of your questions. But again, thank you, Vice Mayor, for bringing this opportunity to discuss.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I have the director of the Friends of the Libraries come forward?
Bob?
Yes.
Come on down, Bob.
Because I feel that this is so important for us to highlight. Education is something that I really am very passionate about, and when we partner with Friends of the Libraries, who are able to give us such backup, not only with their knowledge and hours of service, but also their pocketbook. So really, truly, it's something to be notable. So I wanted to ask you this evening, why is it that you continue to do such things for the City of Chandler when it comes to the library? Keeping thinking, and I know that we have a mobile that is coming up and all these kinds of things happening. Can you really tell the people of Chandler the passion behind all of that?
Is there a microphone?
Yes, you can just speak. You're on it.
Yeah, and we're excited. What older people used to call Bookmobile is now the Outreach Mobile. It's just gonna be coming in a month or so, and it's gonna be incredible, and I'm very excited about that. But in this case, we were approached, the Friends were approached by the library system and said, "We have a dream, and we need this help. Can you do it?" And the community that supports the Chandler library system has been gracious beyond words. I went to the people involved and said, "The community has supported you so well that we have the funds to do this. Just write a check. Tell us how much." And that is strictly due to the people who use the Chandler library system, and the people who run the Chandler library system. It's been a dream for me and the Friends to work with, and I'm looking forward to many more years of making the Chandler library system what it is, which is world-class, inventive, and supportive.
Thank you so much. This is well said, and we really appreciate you. Again, we want you to know that this is not going unnoticed, and that the City of Chandler is so proud of our libraries, and we are so proud of the work that you guys are doing with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Any additional questions for Mr. Septon? All right, or Bob?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you both. And John, you have to choose your words carefully when, in the presence of librarians. All right, Council, that, those are all of the questions called in tonight. We will be back here on Thursday to vote on all of the other items in these on our agenda as well. So with that, we'll see you on Thursday.